Specifically.
Specifically.
Is, are there limits to that? Is it unlimited what they could ask for?
No, within reason, I don't think you can put yourself, the way I understand is you can't put yourself or your system at detriment. Helping them, we're not required to do anything without, it would be on our means.
And even at that point, we could sell them too if we needed to. You know, after a certain point, the good faith effort of, okay, we can give you twenty thousand gallons water, but you know, after that, there's gonna be some cost behind it for producing it or whatever. So.
Which they would have had that cost anyway themselves too, either way.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions about this, uh, the co-worn mutually agreement? When you said haul water, do you mean haul bulk water or bottled water?
Bulk water.
Bulk, bulk, the potable?
Yeah, hauling potable water to our system.
To the system.
Yes.
Yeah. From where?
Well, and then I think we were looking at, we, you probably this case was gonna come from Pueblo to here.
Or from Walsenburg to here. We have those lined up, set up, so that way if we needed to, what would have been the shorter route would have been the best cost to do it.
Or Walsenburg.
If we had to do it.
Where's the shortest one from Pueblo, right there? The STEM beach?
They were looking there, no, they were looking at, um, right there at Pueblo Boulevard, kinda over by Budweiser and Peewag, there's a set of hydrants there that they can pull out.
Yeah. And the thing is, is it's like when I called them, they said that they needed at least a forty-eight hour notice so that they could test that hydrant and get a test on it, make sure that it was potable and sufficient for everybody's health.
This is all dooms- doomsday.
Yeah.
I think it also includes natural disasters, you know, fires, you know, stuff like that.
It's basically be a good neighbor agreement.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, James.
Okay, next on the list was, uh, the CCAC, uh, application, if you write this down. If you noticed, we put in property line state out, and that's at the corners. Uh, we also put in their foundation plan, building staked out before excavation, so that way we get all those, that information. Is there anything else that was seen that we need to address?
I've got a question on this location of improvements on property note, front of house most place legal address. How are you gonna do that?
If you look at our, our address sheets, oh, some that are like on that Jefferson that are into cul-de-sac, there's actually two addresses on it. One for Jefferson and one for the cul-de-sac.
So what is the front of a house?
The front would be your front door.
Okay.
That, it would be, it'd be your mailing address.
Okay, let's go with that there. That's why I say we have a problem with this, that, uh, trailer that's going in in Applewood, the single one, of course, the how, the door.
You have, you have all of them on out, in Applewood that are the same way, that their door is on the side.
I'm not talking about the other Applewood, I'm talking about the one that's just being approved and we're using supposedly this. The house does not face the street, I mean, the door does not face the street, so I think we should strike this.
Okay.
Um, would it be better to just put a disclaimer on it, it's, because the main one one is the one that is requested.
That's not a, I don't. Yeah, but we don't do that. We call, uh, all we can approve is color, texture, and placement. Placement doesn't mean direction.
I, I think Pueblo County requires it.
Pueblo County can do that. I'm just saying, they can do that. That's beyond our purview.
They, they do. Yeah.
But they call us for the address, you know, they ask us.
They can get an address, they know their addresses, but I'm just saying, for us to require front of house most place, house face legal address, no, that's not our purview there. We can say where it can be on the property, but not the direction it can set. So I'm, all I'm asking the board, just strike that one phrase, uh, let the entity that wants to, uh, enforce it enforce it, excuse me.
Okay, so, so then on that, what I'm looking at is location of improvement of property. We should have the address, a line for the address on.
No problem with an address on a property.
Okay, because I think that's ninety percent of what this is, is, is it this, I know it's, you have your two different addresses here, but if they could be saying that I'm going in this cul-de-sac.
Right. Which one are, they specify which one they are in those cases.
The, the access permit determines the address. So when you go to roads and bridges and they issue an access permit, it's issued to the address. For instance, the properties that, uh, Director Collins was planning on building on, uh, he changed the legal address from a cul-de-sac to a main street. It, there's a choice there, and your access permit is what determines that. We don't.
So just, what do you wanna change on that, on that?
Just strike that statement.
Just, just strike the one statement, yeah.
Is it just from note on?
Yes.
Yeah, just from note on to strike that. And, and if that's not something we cover, I would agree with, with Director Cook. If that's not something that's, um, our avenue to cover, then allow the county to do it.
Okay, so is there anything else on this form that we need to change or address?
Let me take a quick look here, uh, this location of street light, who required by covenants, uh, yeah, we cover that. Actually, propane tank. We don't cover location of propane tank, uh, I believe that's Pueblo County, uh, mechanical.
Yeah. Just strike that one.
Yeah. Uh, distance between buildings, that's setbacks, location improvements, that's, that's all setback. Fence types, materials and height, that's us, landscaping diagram. There are, if not included, the original plan must be submitted later. We need to, uh, be careful with this one because the landscaping that's been enforced in the past was generally from, uh, ninety-seven percent one resolution. That resolution was not passed by a legal entity. Uh, now, I believe in, what unit are you, Mr. Ray?
Uh, the one over here.
Apple, uh, not Applewood.
Village.
I believe there are one or two units that do require, uh, landscaping, but other than that, there's, uh, basically no requirement for landscaping. Uh, you might scratch it, uh.
Well, it says we're required by covenants.
Right, and that's why I say, but we've got it, uh, landscaping, if not included in original plans, must be submitted later. I, I think that should just be where required.
Where required by covenant?
Yeah, because there's almost no covenants that require landscaping.
I was gonna say, I, believe it or not, I've spent the last couple of weeks going through several of them. Oh, God, great reading. Um, but yeah, most of them, I haven't went through a single one yet, actually, that requires.
I don't remember seeing one. I thought the village might have it.
I think it might too, because they actually required the original builders in there to put irrigation in.
It's one of the few with streetlights.
Yep.
Yeah, we got streetlights, we got sidewalks.
Uh, no. Null wood is another one.
Yes. So, I, I'm thinking, e- if it's in there, I wouldn't mind having it, just if required.
Okay.
Because for the average person, it's not required.
Right.
Uh.
And then, just while we're touching on covenants, one thing that I did notice, and I know Director Cook had mentioned this before, but unit ten, I can specify that one, um, the ones we have online are not, and I repeat, not the same as the ones recorded at the courthouse. I just purchased two lots in unit nine, and I got a copy of the covenants that came from the courthouse with my closing. They are nowhere near what you guys have posted online.
Okay.
So we definitely, uh, might wanna look into going down and getting the actual covenants from the courthouse and making sure the stuff is. Because I told him, I got online and I was like, now look at this stuff that's under commercial structures. And under commercial structures, it had no clotheslines, okay? I go to the actual covenants that was sent to me, they had them under different subsections and paragraphs, and there was paragraphs that were missing that were on the ones that I got from the closing that were not in the ones online. So I would love to see those, I, I realize we've got a million and one things to do, but I would love to see those get updated.
Yeah, I will bring that up when I, uh, finish some of the work I'm working on for the committee anyhow. But, uh, that is an issue that I've touched on in the past, is before we start enforcing anything other than covenant review, or I mean, building reviews one thing. But if you start enforcing, you, we've got to have the actual documents. Everything online was an antique OCR scan. And their OCR was.
I don't even know if it's an OCR scan, because their, their, their numbers, the, the actual covenants have got them subparagraphed with letters where the ones that are online look like somebody was copying them and didn't copy them, just kinda did a shortcut while they were copying them.
That may be.
Is what it looks like to me.
Okay, sounds, sounds like something for a later day. Yeah, any, any more information on the, or any more questions on the, uh, form before? All right, those changes are noted, and we will, the other, the other piece of this was, I know Director Cook asked to have a notice put in with our water bill. Did you want it done like the one that we have here on the back of the bill, that's staying, stating notice?
I've left that to your discretion.
Or you just wanna mine in the, in the bill?
I, I don't understand how you're setting it up in there, so I, I don't have.
It can be either one. The comments section, we change every month, we can put whatever we want to in there, or we can make it the whole back of the bill, whichever.
Are you limited by characters?
I think that the office should determine that, because I'm not familiar with the sheet.
Yeah, I'm not either. I would, I would just want to say, if, if I was to put in any of it, I would just want it to be very noticeable.
Well, that, that's why I was looking at going this way and putting it on the back of the bill, so that when they flip over the bill, it has this notice as, this is what's going on, and.
Yeah.
Cause they had told us you're gonna see that there's.
You're gonna see.
I would recommend we leave it to the, uh, office.
Yeah, whatever you just.
Okay. All right. Next.
Systems.
Next, uh, was asked to bring a resolution. I included some of the documentation from the attorney within it. There's the resolution, some of the things that we argued back and forth about, uh, the resolution is there. Uh, one of the things that we, she did make a total recommendation on is that due to one point eight point two amendments, amendments to provisions of these rules and regulations to include changes of material, contents, and additions, there too may occur at the board's discretion. However, the enactment of the said amendments shall take place only after public publication of notice, uh, announcing the proposed change or addition, and the time and place of a public hearing related to the proposed amendment. So, if we did go into a resolution, we'd have to have a public hearing on it. And also, she recommended that there would be a variance in it, and that it would be on a annual review or something in that aspect. So that way, if the water line, as it grows, as you do have, uh, line extensions, as it gets closer, then you are aware that these people have a cistern and they have to tap into our line at that point. If it hits within the four hundred feet. So there was, that's the reason kind of behind the variance and also the resolution that would be in with this. Like I said, I've already had a few people within this last week even come in and say, well, what about a well? And no, we don't allow wells. Uh, we're looking at a, uh, situation for a cistern. If you wanna put in a cistern, haul water to it, we're working on that, but there is no hardship for a well or anything in that nature at this point in time. So, we're charging a fee, significant fee for a cistern. What? No, we're not charging a fee for it. We're charging, we're charging it on the water end, because they're gonna have to haul it themselves. We get a premium for our water haul, whereas they're paying, they're paying that.
Yeah, they're paying about three times as much.
Yes, they're gonna pay twen- twenty-five dollars a thousand for out of the, out of the stamp pipe versus the residence is, is, uh, I think it comes out to be fourteen dollars a thousand roughly, I can't remember, it varies between.
But, and the same.
We discussed it during the budget, uh, and when we ran the numbers, I think we tried to memorize it over, what was it, five or seven years? Uh, that they would actually pay the tap fees if they had hauled that long.
The tap fee.
So the only benefit to a property owner for a cistern is not paying.
Or main line extension, which is depending, what like, you're probably looking at anywhere from eighty to a hundred dollars a foot, depending on the size of the lot.
But they still pay their tap and offset water costs.
And they're, and they're paying that line maintenance and stuff that a normal homeowner is paying.
Because they're, yeah, cause they're paying for the water.
You're paying through, through the water.
So they're paying for our infrastructure, plus they're paying the tap fee.
So what keeps them from going somewhere else for a while?
We're the cheapest.
Where they can't get.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're still the cheapest.
We're the cheapest by far.
You can't just go. Walsenburg's not gonna give it to you, because you're beyond the ten mile limit. There's nothing between here and Walsenburg. If you go towards Pueblo, Pueblo's the closest, and most people don't wanna haul that far.
The cost of trucking from Pueblo to here is.
Plus I think.
You can triple, you can triple our price and still probably heat it.
I had heard they're hauling currently, there's a guy hauling, and it's ninety dollars a thousand from Pueblo.
Kirshner or Kirsh- I can't remember.
I don't know the name, I just saw the report.
Yep.
Like I said, with this resolution, it, it just gives another angle so that we are doing something in a good faith effort to make it affordable without getting that hardship that I need a hardship well in your area.
You, you're trying to offset our responsibility under our statement of purpose by doing this.
Yes.
I think it's.
Okay, other thoughts?
More.
Would there be a tap fee then when they do ta- tap in?
Yes.
There still be a tap fee.
Yes.
Because at that time, now we're taking over the maintenance.
And the water rate would be totally different.
And the water rate will drop significantly.
Yeah.
So what we need here is, is the next board, we need to have that as a agreement.
Yeah, if you, if you feel, yeah, after you, I'm at the, the resolution and you feel that it is what we need to do at that point, then we can set it up as, uh, we'll have a public hearing on it and go from there.
Anything else?
No. Number four, okay, number four, uh, friends of Holly Dot, they're having a tournament July, June first, uh, as you, as I say here, announcing the board to give direction and allowing friends of Holly Dot to be able to keep the money for green fees for the tournament for July first, two thousand nineteen. They continue to be a viable partner for the golf course by dona- donating many hours of manpower and labor to keeping the facility as well as buying material or paying for services, sand, uh, trimming trees, cart path material, paint, pins for greens, and practice green pins. They have a list of other things they would like to do for the course, which will improve our course to draw more players, and we'd like to have a fund to continue to do this. Uh, the course will still be charging the thirteen dollars per head for the cart fees, and, uh, that will give us revenue, some revenue for the tournament. Uh, I am just asking for the cart, the, the green fees portion of it.
Which is how much?
So on a normal term, I think print charge is thirty-four, thirty-five dollars is the portion of the, you know, they set what they want their entry PTOB is, but their, the course is thirty-four, thirty-five dollars, so instead of it being that, it'll be, we'll get thirteen dollars a head. So you're, you're looking at a twenty, twenty-two dollars difference, you know, is what we're allowing, would be allowing them to keep knowing that they're gonna put that money back into the golf course?
You're talking about two thousand, three thousand dollars, are you?
Depending on how many teams they have. I think they're up over twenty teams.
I, I just talked to him today and I believe it was seventeen.
Seventeen.
See, they'll make up, they've already got extra tournaments anyhow this year, and, and those people spend a lot of time, manpower out there at the golf course. They, they save us thousands of dollars just being there.
And then it's keeping their fun going and keeping them alive, that, you know, uh, I know we, I just went down and bought a faucet for over here. It was forty dollars. They had done it, but they didn't have it in, in there, so that's why I'm saying it was one of those deals that, well, we don't know what we can do, but we wanna do it, but this way it gives them that little bit of extra money in there to keep little things like that. Well, we need a new faucet, we'll put it in, we'll go purchase it, and it's done.
They just re-strike the parking lot, you know, for the, for the golf course there, they, they're always doing something to improve down here, so.
I know they had a few trees that they were half dead and stuff on the course, they ended up paying for them. I think it was close to about fifteen hundred or fifteen hundred dollars for it to come in and mulch them and have a tru- professional tree trimmer come in and do it, so. And they paid for it. Any other questions, thoughts?
Mister Chairman, normally I'm opposed to, uh, handing out funds like this, but in this case, I think it's actually a, uh, reasonable request. Uh, not just a request for the funds, but the way I look at this, and they're a five oh one, and I don't like just handing the funds over to five oh ones, but from what I'm understanding about their structure is all of their money goes back into Holly Dot specifically, so we're not losing at all here.
And that is the case, correct?
And, and, and it, and it's not going for manpower hours either, it's going for.
Material, they call it material if they spend money.
We really should do, even though I generally oppose these, I would.
I actually think this would make us money in the long run too, because the labor's free, so if they've got the money to do it, we're getting the labor for free, I think it's actually a win-win.
I do too. Okay.
And that, I didn't put on the agenda because it's just a direction that I, as the manager, I could go down and tell print this is.
Why rather us vote on it, the main body?
Okay, if you wanna, we can have it, we can.
Yeah, just add it in.
Well, number five, all right, number five, you have six pieces of property that was, uh, brought in for, uh, that they wanted to buy. I didn't pa- I didn't copy all the, Bob has all the, uh, contracts down there. I just did a short summary as to what our list price, um, Yvonne has from the auditors, as to what we have, which is our list. Uh, the proposed, the PP price was what Harland gave me for some of the properties that he was going to list for us, and what he estimated amount at, and then what the offer price was to us. Uh, if you wanna go up to the map and show you exactly where each property is, uh, I feel that the first five, they are really low ball. As to it, I feel that three thousand, at a minimum of three thousand per lot is, is probably the way to go. There's, uh, one in there that might be a little more, but it's still, doesn't have full services.
What are the lot sizes on these?
Uh, they're variable, they're, they're variable. They go from nine thousand to probably, I think the biggest one is at twenty-nine.
This PP price is what the realtor came up with?
Yeah. When we were asking for realtors.
And this lot twenty-nine, two sixty-five, that's that corner lot?
It's right here. Twenty-nine, two sixty-five is.
I believe that's Antoine at, I mean, if I didn't wear that.
Twenty-nine, two sixty-five.
Yeah, that's.
It's in right down in here.
That's over where Steve is.
So you're looking at probably about eleven thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, you know, that area is a pretty desirable area.
And it does have.
Sewers there, but water will have to flow all the way down to, uh, on that net.
They're gonna have to add a ways for water.
Into the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to bring water in probably to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was there any other ones you wanted to know where they're at? I can pull them up.
Thoughts about, any other questions about, or as he said, you wanna see a specific lot? What I, Mister Chairman, I actually went to the, uh, Matt Wolgo with James and, uh, looked at most of these. Now, it's interesting that, uh, first off, I didn't get this till minutes before, and normally I would just make a motion to throw this all out. But in the essence of trying to work with everybody, I think we should go ahead and allow it on the agenda. But if we look at the comps in this, there's two of them here that actually have comps. And your comps, thirty-three hundred, thirty-three hundred, uh, and, uh, two thousand on this, uh, small one, but that's a.
That was an odd number.
An odd number, yeah. And then the other one here is, uh, four thousand and, uh, let's see here, I've got them right.
Give me your twenty-nine.
Yeah, there's forty-five hundred, four thousand. So, James is correct that these are three thousand dollar lots without any question, when you do use the comps, it works a lot. Now, uh, the only, uh, one that I somewhat disagree with is this number five on the list, unit twenty-nine, lot two sixty-five. Now, they had it priced at seven, that, that's even a bit low in my book, but in trying to deal reasonably, thirty-five hundred is, you know, just half of that, thirty-five hundred is not really unreasonable if they're going to do a package deal. Uh, and the, uh, other odd lot is number four, which is, uh, unit fourteen, lot seven eighty-four. I won't forget this hour list stuff, because that's auditor's guesses over there. Uh, when we get back into the price, we've got the real estate agent putting it at, uh, fifteen hundred. Any lot that's buildable is a minimum of two thousand.
Which is what that one, I think.
Yeah. However, if we look at the, we got three, 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 uh, two, and thirty-five hundred. If they wanted to go, uh, three across the board, I would recommend the board accept, uh, that type of, uh, offer, even though that's not an offer at this point.
Is that the same?
This would be a counter.
Mom, is that the same person?
Well, this last one, I'm assuming it down here.
No, the last one, the last one is a different person.
The top five are supposed to be one person.
Are the same person.
Okay.
So there's supposed to be one person.
I don't care who the person is, but what is the purpose of buying multiple?
They're building, they, they, they're speculating, they're, they're in the process of building, I think, three houses now. And, uh, they're looking at other property that they can build on that.
They wouldn't choose these lots if they couldn't use them.
Yeah, these are all gonna be.
So I know you've crossed out the hard list, but did I understand right, last meeting? Let's say we did this, that we took eight thousand dollars, we'd show almost an eight thousand dollar loss on our books then.
Yeah, we need to at least cover the total costs.
Actually, what it's on a cost. What this is, is a number that the auditor generates to balance your loan debt ratio. It's not an actual cost to us.
They're, they're saying it's the cost that we had to incur when we got this property.
Nobody's ever showed me anything that we've actually incurred a cost.
And that's what we told them. I, show me it, and they said, no. Uh, one of the other things that I did.
They said, no?
No, that's, this is where the numbers were, were from. They don't, they don't even know where the numbers came from.
Those numbers are pie in the sky. We, we look at it that way.
And the only thing, the impacts are, are, um, um, our fund, our, our, our enterprise, our general fund.
It's our asset value.
Yeah.
Or if it's in the property enterprise, it's gonna show a loss, which is something you brought up, I think, last year, that we had, we were upside down in that fund.
I didn't.
So frankly, from what I know, so if we take our list there, all those with the nine thousand or ten thousand dollar one in it, and you take the PP price and say you said fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We'd be, we would not lose money and make that package deal.
No, no. With the package deal, with one, with all five properties, it would be like fourteen thousand seventy dollars I figured out. And by selling all five for five thousand is fifteen thousand dollars, so we need.
More likely we're gonna, especially someone here to, somebody a builder, we're gonna get tap fees on all these.
That's right, we're gonna get money on every one of these.
I think we sold one or two properties already in fund five, which is these top four. I can see if we have, if we're over, how much we're over, that may cover the difference.
But I think, I think we're, we're best off keeping it at the three thousand per lot.
And, and this last offer of three is a reasonable offer when I look at their comps. Now, even though it's a bit low, it's reasonable. So I would, at this point, ask the board, we can't do it at this section of the meeting, but in the main section, if we counter this.
So let, let me ask a question. You said, how many of those have comps? Two?
The bottom one.
There's two, yes.
The number six.
So, so we, and I think that's what they did, is they put the comps for all five.
Yeah, they did do it.
Well, the comps would be for all five properties, showing that each of these properties in all these different areas is gonna be the same.
Right.
So. So it's been.
I'm trying to pull them up.
Well, instead of eighteen comps, they just did three comps for this whole section.
Forty-five hundred.
So, so here's my only question. For eighteen months, we've thrown hissy fits about how we get bids for the real estate.
Yes.
And then we come to an agreement, what we're gonna do, and how we're gonna ignore it.
No, we have the comps. They did return them.
So, so the comp for unit five, lot five thirty-one is the same as the comp for fourteen, seven eighty-four?
It's a buildable lot. It's not an improved lot. It's not an oversized lot. It's not a business lot. They are, uh, comps for residential lots.
So all of these properties would fall in line with those comps?
Yeah, because even if I pull up the other, uh, comps, now they got a couple of lowball ones in there, but let me pull them up real quick.
But, but Terry, we were losing, we were losing money. We're selling for less than what we were being charged on the books for that lot. And we don't want that to happen yet.
Right. Now, here's your comps for the other unit, uh, thirty-three hundred, thirty-three hundred, and two thousand. So.
Average is about five.
Yeah, yeah. So what I'm saying.
Where's your calculator at? I need that one up so.
So when we average all of these comps, three is a little higher than the bottom.
Okay, all I'm saying is, is, you know.
I, I would appreciate it laid out like you said, per contract, in a contract in front of me. They did get the contracts, you just didn't deliver them to us.
Right. I figured, I figured I'm gonna print all of that.
No, 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 I, I understand that part. I just don't, I just think we, uh, made such a big deal.
Don't wanna be a bigger it.
Yeah, then we go, oh, this is.
I understand.
No, no, the comps do back up the information. Okay. As long as we got all of that, that we're supposed to have.
We got it.
Alright, any other questions, thoughts? Anything else, James, or is the study session?
I think we did there, we got some surprises later on in the end, but I'll go through those.
Cool. I love surprises.
The correspondence.
Alright, let us, uh, adjourn the study session. I will now at six thirty-seven call the regular meetings order. Please join me in a punctuality.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time, uh, so desire to take a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Uh, look, the minutes reflect, four board members are here. Uh, Justin is absent. Any comments on the agenda, anything we need to add? If not, any in approval?
I would like to add the, what, the Holly Dock, uh, friends of Holly Dock to the agenda.
Alright. We'll add that as number four under item number twelve. Anything else?
I don't see the, um, real estate offer on here. We need to add that.
Offers for property.
Offers for property.
Got it.
Under the CCACs.
Under number twelve?
Oh, I see what you, uh, see what you've done there. Okay.
Okay, if no, uh, additions, extra, another additions, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Do I have a second? I will second it. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. And we are approving the minutes for both the study work session on May fourteenth as well as the regulars moving on the fourteenth. Mister Chairman, due to the statement we had on, uh, the minutes that I would need to approve, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I would second, uh.
Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, any operational information tonight?
No. Well, we have a few things, uh, yeah.
I mean, assuming.
Well, I guess we could, being that it's live Facebook or whatever, let people know about, we're gonna have the water off Thursday for a few hours. I think I, I posted all the businesses.
The, the reason for the hosts over here is they were working on the backflow preventer at the fire station, at which time they shut off the water over there, while in the past there was a gate valve and it failed, so they had put in a ball valve. While when they went to turn on the water again, either the gate valve or the ball valve ended up staying shut.
They didn't remove the old gate valve at that time. Remember when the, the wreck happened there and they had to, long story short, we're gonna solve all the problems Thursday. We're gonna shut down Bent Brothers, which will affect essentially from Bent Brothers to Crow Cut Off. Is gonna potentially out of water for a couple hours while we, uh, re- replace all that stuff at the fire station.
We also had, uh, more problems with the water plant.
So we.
Last Thursday, uh, well, it was Friday, at one o'clock, uh, one of the skids, they shut down all the skids. So what we ended up doing, we were able to do was Gary got ahold of, uh, Aquatics.
Evoca.
Evoca. And, uh, they talked him through, we eliminated one skid that was giving us the problem, and we ran on, we've been running on two skids. We have a guy coming in to do all the repairs tomorrow. Hopefully this will solve all of our problems, which is due to.
Very broad statement.
Essentially.
Can I borrow that guy up?
Yeah. The issue that we had, the, in the first instance with the, you know, the wiring connections and stuff like that, those parts were ordered and coming. Um, the Band-Aid or the workaround that was put in to get us through didn't hold as long. So this is, uh, around tomorrow, we're supposed to, Evoca's supposed to be out here with those parts and pieces and have, be installed.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Anything else, operation, operational?
Operationally, no, um.
Busy metering.
Did you get the, uh, find out anymore on riding mower for Josh?
Uh, we have one more bid. Just to appease the peace regardless of where we're at, but, um, we've added one more unit too, for you guys to look at and review.
This is local.
I don't know what this is yet, but we did approve up to eleven thousand.
Right, so we, with that being said, we've knocked them out and found another, uh, unit that falls within that criteria. Um, and we're looking at that as an option as well to the two that were presented to you at the last night.
One of the, one of the things is it's a local business, so we'll be doing the local, ask for parts and stuff. You can get in here or he can order them in, and we'll probably be the same leeway as taking it to Pablo and having them do it there. Uh, one of the big things with this is it has a five-year warranty on it, whereas Cabo had three. So that's one of the aspects I was looking at that is.
Well, I myself would rather keep the money locally.
I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I do have some concerns with that particular brand. Um, I can understand why they might warranty it a little longer because tend to have more issues, but, um. Well, I mean, I can't.
I don't know the quality of this specific unit, but I just had one in the shop that I really wasn't careful.
I, I think we're at the point now where Jim, Josh and I need to sit down and review the three that we're looking at. And, you know, scratch and claw at each other, kick dirt on each other, whatever, and then settle on one unit. And we'll keep it under our guidelines and.
Keeping the money locally would be nice, but at the same time, I would much prefer you guys get a better unit than keeping the money locally.
Did you check Husser or Grasshopper?
Not Grasshopper, um.
I can't remember the name of the one over there in Florence.
Yeah, that was, that's Husser, and they deal with Grasshopper too.
Yeah.
Uh, I've dealt with them, and their service isn't the best when it comes time to order parks and stuff. Uh, ninety percent of the time, it was like a two-way lead on any park or whatever you needed. Uh, then you did talk to them and, no, we don't even offer that, but then you call back ten minutes later, yeah, we do, but I can get you this, so.
I understand that.
Yeah, I think more of a customer service type scenario than necessarily, I think they have a machine that's in our price range, but I don't think it has as many features as what we're looking at.
Needed when it comes to parks, yeah.
Yeah. And, and that's what I'm, I'm looking at is where John Deere, uh, Cabota.
I would just like to, I, I'm sure y'all are shopping and to finish this off for me, uh, Husky is not at the top of my list, my unit.
Uh, it's, it's options, and that's what we're looking at is what is best.
And I appreciate you bringing the options.
Yeah.
Very good. Yeah, I have lots of confidence in the people making that decision. Anything else, operation? Statement of conduct and demeanor. In order for the business of the board to be conducted in the most effective and expeditious manner, it is necessary that all persons present maintain a demeanor of civility toward the board, staff, and each other. Conduct that appears threatening or aggressive will not be tolerated. Shouting, speaking out of order, or the use of offensive gestures similarly are not acceptable. Such behavior shall constitute the forfeiture of your right to remain in attendance and may, as a point of order, brought to the board's attention by council or any board member, including the chairperson, result in your being asked to leave the meeting by the chairperson or upon your refusal, being escorted out of the meeting by the proper authorities. Uh, any citizen input, Karen? Alright, agenda items.
Okay, Co-Warren, like I said, this is, uh, Agency Response Network. It's for handling mutual aid and assistance agreements between county, cities, municipalities, whatever, for, uh, situations as a water or wastewater situation. I believe it would be a good benefit to have in our pocket in the future, uh, to go forward. If we do have a problem, at least there is resources and, uh, stuff that we can rely on. Uh, I, like I said, after going through it about two, two weeks ago, it was nice to just make up a call to send you a list. She even said, I'll let you sign the form until you have a meeting and get everybody else involved if you need to. So, uh, I believe it'd be beneficial to go forward and have, uh, the chairman sign it.
Do you need to send anybody to an update or a seminar or anything to handle that side up?
No, no, this is all, they'll come down, if, if we wanted to, they, they'd be welcome to come down.
Yeah, from my understanding, they'll come down and do an evaluation and of what assets we're willing to offer versus, um, what we, what we.
And what we can offer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds very much like what you guys do with the fire district, isn't it, Warren? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the offer to sign up with Co-Warren.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, enter into a mutual aid agreement with Co-Warren, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. James?
Okay, next you have the CCAC, uh, CCAC application form. Uh, there was, in the workshop, we discussed about taking out, uh, under location of improvements of property, take out note for housemate phase. Uh, the other one was location of propane tank to dilute it and landscaping diagram where required would be added in there instead of not.
Were required by covenant.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, with the, uh, amended changes to the form, I make a motion to approve the form as amended.
It's been a move to approve the amended CCAC application form. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
They moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I think you should change the name so that you can all say it.
I got it.
They did this.
Oh, nice.
It's not everybody. As a point of order, brought to the board's attention.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next on the list is, uh, offers on property, which will be. Mister Chairman, I think we beat this one up pretty good. I'd make a motion that we counter these offers with three thousand across the board.
Now, before I second that offer, just real quick, uh, that one, the number six was a separate individual, correct?
Yes. Yes.
They did a contract and all that stuff, correct?
So you. I would actually move to accept, if you want to amend my motion, you just accept that three thousand.
Yeah, accept that one.
Okay. And then.
And counter the other five.
Counter the other five.
Now, being that this is a package deal for all five of them, or can they pick and choose any one of them at three thousand? I have no problem with either or.
Well, I do number four.
Because you're.
Yeah.
Yeah, but countering, but I have number four. I think it needs, I think he brought, he knows five package. I think, I think we need to say fifteen thousand for the first five.
Yeah.
That'd be my recommendation. That way covers number four.
Let me, let me get this back into order here. Bob made a motion. Do I have a second or are we gonna let it die?
No, I'll, I'll second his, his motion on, on countering.
No, you're amending the motion.
Amending the motion to accept number six, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so you're accepting Bob's motion, you're amending Bob's motion to exclude number six and accept it because it's an individual.
To accept it.
Okay, so we have that one on the floor, Harry. We have a m- motion and a second to accept number, to counter number one through five for three thousand dollars each. And accept number six. Do I hear any discussion?
We're, we're still short eighteen seventy on the first four, because they're in a different fund than the other two, at the three thousand each, just at the.
Harry.
Say that again.
So those first four properties are in the property, uh, fund. So if we accept three thousand, we're still short on each one, each one of those, we're still short one thousand eight hundred and seventy in the property fund.
Okay, for the first four, but we're talking about the first five though.
Well, the fifth one is in a different fund, so we're okay with that one. It's gonna cover the costs.
Yeah. So if we, but if we made a package deal for the gentleman, for the first five for fifteen thousand dollars, that'd cover all. Yeah. So if we, but if we made a package deal for the gentleman, for the first five for fifteen thousand dollars, that'd cover all of our expenses?
No, we're still eighteen seventy short.
You, you're still gonna have that problem, but there again, that's not a firm number.
Okay, so Harry, do you have discussion? What are, what are you thinking? We have a motion and a second on the floor, but at this point, you can share your thoughts.
I just don't want us losing money that's on our books. However you work it around.
If they bought all five, even though on our end, we have two different funds, if they bought all five and, you know, you, at that point, you would cover your costs if they're all the same. Could you transfer that balance from one fund to the other to cover the cost?
Does it have to say three thousand for this lot, three thousand for that lot? It could say two thousand for this lot and four thousand for that.
Contracts do it, yes.
They're in separate funds. Ones in an, they, these are in enterprise and the others are in a general fund. I don't know that you can transfer them.
But that's something we could look at.
Just on our end, not necessarily on the contract.
But lots that we did sell that were in that. That we've sold out of that fund.
Right, that we've already sold that fund to see if we could cover this, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, I won't speak to uh Director Hockstetter. Harry, these numbers here are not good numbers. These are numbers that an auditor came up with. Nobody knows where they got them from. They're just pulled.
By the owner.
They're on our books.
And it's actually
From two sets of auditors, different auditors. Car.
Are saying the same thing.
We're allowed to sell it at a loss. It doesn't change anything. It might change your loan debt ratio, but over everything we've done this year, it will not change our loan to debt ratio. It can't.
But I just don't want the auditor saying that we.
The auditor has no choice.
Will be upside down in our property fund.
But I think when you look at reports again.
And we, we're not supposed to be that.
We're closer what we are than we were, but I just don't want to be in that same pickle again. I have no problem with getting it close. Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Any other discussion? If not, we will vote on the motion on the floor. The motion to remind you is that we counter offer offers number one through five at three thousand dollars per lot, total of fifteen thousand. And that we accept offer number six, which is three thousand dollars.
And the one through five, just for clarification for him, is a take it or leave it offer. You take all five lots or you leave it?
Or another.
Or another counter.
Bob said that he'd take three thousand.
Those are separate individual contracts. We have separate contracts.
Okay, so the motion was made.
Motion is made because we have individual contracts.
Okay, so the motion is anywhere all of the first five at three grand. The sixth one is a, um, is accepted. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I guess I'm in favor. Worries me though. That one really worries me.
Worries me is number four.
Yeah, well, the whole thing worries me because what I'm afraid is, is he's gonna cherry pick and we're gonna end up with the crap lots and he's gonna get the better of it.
Well, we have individual contracts. We can't.
You have motion carry. Let's move on.
Okay.
Item four.
Okay, uh Friends of Holly Dot, I'd just like to have direction on that. Somebody would like to make the motion to allow Friends of Holly Dot to.
Mister Chairman, because I requested that be put on the agenda, I'll make the motion to accept the offer from Friends of Holly Dot.
May I, let's see if this is what you're saying. You're saying that we accept the director's suggestion that we donate.
He's got it all written out.
Okay. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second that um that the green fees for the Friends of Holly Dot tournament be turned over to the Friends of Holly Dot. That the current fee continue to be collected by uh the off course. I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, any new business? Any old business?
I know I have a section here.
No, you don't.
Nope, no business.
Okay. Uh, correspondence?
I received a call from this Brett B., Brett Bowers. He has bought the property down there where I guess the Holly Dot sign is in the wall across from Ace Hardwell. And he states that that sign is on his property and he would be willing to allow us to keep the sign there and stuff if uh, if we pay for a sign for his real estate to go next to it. Uh, at this point in time, but at this point in time, I have, one of the Friends of Holly Dot, she was in the business of going through easements and rightaways and things like that. She is looking for me to dig up if there is a rightaway for that sign, an easement to keep it there, so that way we have an angle right off the bat saying, no, there is a, uh, easement there for that and there's nothing we can do about it. And uh we're working through it. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that this was given to me and we're going forward and doing some research on it. Okay, the next thing I got, we got bad news from Goko. Uh, as you can see, there was a total of over thirty-two million dollars asked for. They have eight million dollars to give out. Uh, they turned us down on our, our grant for eight hundred thousand. I asked for a breakdown of what might not have been in the grant or what we could have put into the grant writing. So that he's doing that and he's breaking it down for me and who got the grants this year, so that way I can compare and say, okay, is it due to Denver, have them forty thousand people and we're gonna satisfy them or us? So we're looking at all, all process on that. Uh, the other that I had come out was, uh, as you noticed, uh, they had a status conference call for the Colorado City Rye uh going on. Uh, Donnie went up with Mister Lewis. They got the new meter in. Everything's going, which was just to let them know that now the next status, if we're gonna have to do anything as a conference, would be in August nineteenth to go back to the court and say either we're completed or we're still having trouble. So Rye has a meter in there.
So yeah, so we're in the trial period. Basically, Rye's looking at a meter. Do we wanna buy this one? The uh Ted Miller said, hey, how about you, you can demo it before you buy it, make sure it's what you want, and that's where we're at. So they brought it up, it's installed, they zeroed it, calibrated it. I was there. Um, I requested to be there for the calibration, so we have both signs involved. Uh, it was calibrated by an independent and it's off and running, so we'll have some data compared to our meter, make sure accuracy and things like that. They're gonna do that uh additionally, uh, one more month. So in um, second week of June-ish, third week, they're gonna have you come back out, zeroed again, calibration. And that way we're getting two months of data, a hundred percent verified that it's accurate. And from that point, they can make their decision. They're paying for everything on that.
And they should know that that second calibration that it wasn't messed with or anything.
Correct. Absolutely. And I'll, I'll be present for that as well when they come up to do that. Um, so they're at this point fulfilling everything we've asked them to do with that and these just other than it's prolonged as far as the court's concerned, but as long as we're not having any um discrepancies, the court's fine.
And as long as it's goodwill on both sides, working with each other.
Yep.
I wonder how many people in the valley have passed away since this started, just a thought.
That's a warm-up thought, mister.
I know. Might be a good story.
Yeah.
All right, good. Maybe it's over. Anything else, Mister Chairman, I'll back up to that side. Is that own residential or business property that you're talking about?
It are, is residential.
No, actually it's, we're, we're gonna put in condos.
Yeah, but it's still our four.
Our five, our five.
Okay. Uh, just from my understanding, double check me on this. Own premise signs are not allowed in an R. So you can't give him a real estate sign for a real estate business. But under private, what Title seventeen.
Would that eliminate our sign?
If it's not on our premise, it does eliminate it. But if it's on our premise, no, it does not. I'm talking about on premise signs.
At this point, my, my opinion is a survey. Where's property line? Where's easement? Where's all that? And that's gonna be, you can't make an argument for either one without knowing.
Yeah, without knowing what's going on.
Well, and that's, that's one of the aspects that we're looking at is, is there any easements in that area first? If there is an easement that's seeing with the sign, is there? We have no worries. We can tell this.
We can't put ours on an easement anyhow.
Huh?
We can't put ours on an easement.
No, but it's been there.
I understand that. There's a lot of things that's been done.
Yeah, but.
But the first time it's questioned or challenged erases that back issue.
But that doesn't.
Once it's after eighteen years or something like that, which that's like.
There is, I know there's utilities and through there.
Yeah.
There's a sewer line runs right on the D car.
The signs have special regulations.
I still think that eighteen year rule applies, so I could be wrong.
That's for ownership, not for sign.
But I think also in the same aspect, that's.
It's more than just a sign, it's a structure.
With the golf course, it is not falling into the covenants of.
Uh, North Parkway.
I was gonna say.
It goes into North.
It's in North Parkway's covenants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have went, uh, I went blank on the terminology for that, but I know that.
Adverse possession.
Adverse possession.
Talking about.
That's another thing.
Anything else? Any other business?
Because it is a structure, it's part of the.
And it's been there for over eighteen years, I'm quite certain.
Yes, it has.
And that does do, like you said, adverse possession. Sorry.
Any other business? Do I have a second?
Second it.
Maybe in a German.
Thank you.